All right, we're going to get started. The November 12th, 2025 work session of the Anorundal County Council is called to order. Please ensure all electronic devices are in silent mode. Do any of my colleagues have any questions before we begin? No? All right. First bill up is Bill Number 8725, Odenton Town Master Plan. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration, Mark Wildonger, our senior planner from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney from the Office of Law, are at the table with me. So this bill was introduced at our request on behalf of OPZ, and it seeks to amend the Odenton Town Center Master Plan to provide more up-to-date and accurate information in order to guide the Region 5 comprehensive zoning process, which we'll be undertaking early next year. Legislation adds text for more accurate future zoning considerations and adds parcels within the Odenton Town Center boundary. And I'm going to turn it over to Mark Wildonger just to talk a little bit about the need for this.
Good morning. So again, during the Odenton Town Center Master Plan process, and again, the plan was adopted in February of 2024, the county was not permitted to rezone properties. The code states that rezoning must occur during the region plan process. Nonetheless, during the Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee meetings and the Office of Planning and Zoning, we included a section in the master plan outlining a vision of what should be rezoned to help inform this Region 5 master planning process that will come before council in early 2026. So given that the OTC is in Region 5, now is the time to revisit the OTC Master Plan zoning recommendations. So when reviewing the recommendations, the Office of Planning and Zoning recognized that some of the items may not apply due to recent developments and that there is a need to provide some more specificity to the recommendations. So the next two slides will just explore the existing or the adopted master plan pages that will be recommended to be adopted, as well as, or sorry, the existing and then the proposed master plan language. The Odenton Town Center Advisory Committee supported the proposed changes on August 26, and the PAB supported the proposed changes on September 17. So again, these are the two pages, Pages 20 and 29 of the adopted Odenton Town Center Master Plan. In the first few paragraphs there at the top of the page, you'll see that it recommends splitting the core OTC-C or Odenton Core zoning districts and converting the historic village mix overlay block to a typical zoning district. So not having it be an overlay, but rather it becomes sort of, I call it, say, flat zoning district. The bullet points then also make vague recommendations on the other properties that are to be recommended for a rezoning during the Region 5 process. And advancing here to the draft language, we've now specified where those properties are with addresses or tax account numbers, and we've also then maintained the language to not split the OTC Core and the historic village mix because they are working as intended, and there had been recent developments from specific projects within the area that would make us recommend now just keeping the OTC-C or Core as is. We've also made a couple of recommendations based on updated county policy for the current comprehensive zoning process. For example, removing the, any slivers of zoning and adding a open space zoning district. That's why you see some of these speckled green areas then within that map. So for example, there's a property on the northeast corner of Sappington Station Circle. We've communicated with that property owner. They are interested in being pulled into the Odenton Town Center, being zoned, Odenton Town Center East. We have received zoning applications for a property on Odenton Road where there was a historic structure. That historic structure is now gone, so we're recommending that we change their zoning to an OTC-T or transition. We've worked with the property owner at 1405 Odenton, otherwise known as the
Okay, we are back, and now we will move on to Bill Number 8925. No, 8825, sorry, I skipped one. The capital budget, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt. With me at the table is Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney, and I have Naomi McAllister, our senior capital budget analyst from the Budget Office, and Kyle Roof, our executive director of facilities from Anorundal County Public Schools. Bill 8825 proposes amendments to the capital budget for fiscal year 2026. Specifically, it transfers appropriations of $3.3 million in general county bond funds from the Board of Education additions project to the Board of Education All Day Pre-K and Pre-K project. It also makes supplementary appropriations in the amount of $7,458,000 in interagency committee grant funds to the Board of Education Building Systems Renovation Project, $216,000 in miscellaneous funds to the Board of Ed Building Maintenance Backlog Project, and $4,800,958 in other state grants, and $1,323,758 in miscellaneous funds for Board of Education Sustainability Initiatives, which is a total increase of $6,124,716. The source of those miscellaneous funds is the utility rebate program. And I'm sure Mr. Roof or Ms. McAllister can answer any questions, provide more details if you would like.
Any questions? They came all the way down here. We've got to, we need to ask them something. Come on, folks. Ms. Robian.
I was really just going to say that our, you know, our analysts' materials were very helpful and explained everything, so I apologize for not having any questions.
No, that's great. That shows how well-prepared we are before we come in. All right. If there are no further questions, we've got it. Thank you so much. Thank y'all for coming down and waiting around for us this morning. All right, we will move on to Bill Number 8925, South River Heights Special Community Benefit District.
Certainly. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Chris Trumbauer, our budget officer, and Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney. So Bill 8925 makes some supplement, or fund transfers and supplementary appropriations to the current fiscal year budget. Specifically, it transfers $96,100 from the Video Lottery Local Impact Aid Fund Public Libraries to VLT Local Impact Aid Fund County Executive VLT Community Grants Fund. There is also a supplementary appropriation to the South River Heights Special Community Benefits District in the amount of $38,075. They were delinquent in meeting some of their county code requirements and state requirements for SCBDs. They've since come into compliance, and so we are releasing those funds to them now that they are in compliance. And there's also a transfer of $1,100,000 from the CAO Contingency Fund to the Office of Finance, Pago, and is designated to the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project Fund. That is in relation to Resolution 3425, which we'll be discussing a little later, to acquire two pieces of property on behalf of the county. I'm sure Mr. Trumbauer can provide any details, answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Robian.
I'll just ask a very broad question. How did these things all end up in the same bill?
Chris Trumbauer, County Budget Officer. So this is a transfer appropriation bill, and so we periodically bring those to the council whenever there is appropriation needed outside of the budget process. The only way to do that is through legislation. So we had a couple of things all happening at the same time, and we knew how busy your legislative calendar was, so we thought we'd put them in one for expediency's sake. But there's, even though, even though these three things are not related to each other, they all do the same thing, which is move money around or add appropriation authority. So they're all in one bill.
All right. Any other questions? Ms. Pickard.
I believe there was some issues regarding the Shipley-Harmon property. Did y'all want to talk a little bit about the environmental impact, the different appraisal numbers? Could you just walk us through those?
Sure. So that is, that's Resolution 3425, which is
Oh, sorry.
It's coming up.
Yeah, it's coming up. We will have
Apologies.
folks from real estate up. Yep.
All right. So guess we can get into that one in greater detail in a minute or two.
I'm ready to go. I'm ready to get to the end.
I know. So, all right. No further questions on the capital transfer. Thank you very much. And next is Resolution Number 3325, Surplus Property.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Christine Neder, our senior assistant county attorney from the Office of Law, and Chris Daniels, our real estate manager from the Office of Central Services. So this resolution has been a couple of years in the works, and this is kind of an interesting situation. If you've never taken a property final in law school, congratulations, but this is the type of thing that might come up on that. So basically, there's a tiny parcel in Glen Burnie on Dorsey Road, just south of BWI, that the county apparently owns. We did not know we owned it for several decades. It was acquired by tax sale in 1937, and at some point, records in ESTAT showed that it was owned by the adjoining property owner, and so the adjoining property owners were paying taxes on it for years and years and years. And then the adjoining property owners sold their property and also this parcel, and it was only when the purchaser did a title search, I believe it was around 2018 or 2019, that they discovered that actually, in the property records of the state, the county was the owner. And so it is a, an undeveloped, tiny, tiny parcel. I think it's about the size of half a basketball court. And so we are surplusing it and doing a private disposition to the property owner that purchased it, thinking that the title chain was clear. I will note that there was some miscommunication regarding the posting of the advertisements, so those have since been posted on the county website, so we'll ask that this be held from the agenda until the advertising requirements have been met. This is something these folks have been working on for a couple of years to clear up the chain of title.
So did we refund all the taxes that the previous owner had been paying for years? No, they don't get their money back?
We did not refund the money.
No, I mean, they've been paying taxes for something that wasn't theirs for a long time, so, interesting. So, yes, I would not want to have to deal with this on a law school final to have that. So are there any questions about this little odd piece? Ms. Robian.
Thank you. This was actually sort of, Ms. Hummer's question was along the same lines. Did they have any recourse, or would they go to forgetting, or was, I mean, was it a sign, I would think since 1937, it's probably added up to something of a significant amount.
The owner's primary interest really is just getting this corrected. He does plan to sell the lot, but he is, I've spoken to him probably 100 times, and he's not asked about having money refunded.
Well, we need more folks like that who will just, you know, pay property taxes on things that aren't theirs.
No, no, we don't.
They can come pay on my, no, I'm kidding.
I am sure this owner is ready to get this taken care of. Yes, that, one of those surprises you find when you do a title search, so, to have. All right. Any other questions on this little parcel? All right. Okay. Well, then, we will now move on to our, to the one that I think there are many more questions about, and that is Resolution Number 3425, some advanced land acquisition. Mr. Hunt.
Yes, Ethan Hunt for the administration. Again, I have Chris Daniels, our real estate manager, and Christine Neder, our senior assistant county attorney. I also have Kyle Roof, our executive director of facilities from Anorundal County Public Schools.
No.
And Erica Matthews, our deputy director from the Department of Wreck and Parks. So this resolution, introduced at the request of the administration, approves the acquisition of two parcels on behalf of Anorundal County. One parcel is a 68.27 acre parcel in Edgewater, which will be an extension of the existing Lockhaven Community Park and used for passive recreation. It will be purchased, if approved by the council, for $4.5 million, utilizing a combination of $2 million from the Advanced Land Acquisition Fund, $2 million from Program Open Space, and $500,000 from reforestation funds. The other parcel is a 7.911 acre parcel on Shipley Avenue in Harmon's, which is to be used as the site for the Board of Education School Bus Lot Facility Capital Project, which you may remember was an issue last year. The purchase price for this is $7,600,000 from Advanced Land Acquisition Fund, and I know there are some questions about it, so we are happy to answer any of those.
Ms. Pickard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I was ready to get this day over with, but can we talk about the variation of appraisals, just because it's been pointed out to us, and then talk about the environmental condition of this property?
When groups were looking at land, a lot of the land values are very subjective. That first appraisal, and we did have the appraisal kind of rush the process, that first appraisal, when it came in, we thought the values were a little low. We looked at the, we had some comparables that we looked at. They had their own comparables. One of the biggest differences with the comparables that they used in the initial appraisals was that their comparables were wooded lots or raw lots. They didn't take into it, into the account that we were buying a lot that has already been cleared, which in itself brings a lot of value to buying a cleared lot with the utilities already there. So that, then they updated that, the second appraisal, where they did the update, you could see the considerable jump in the value. That second appraisal, that value went up to $6.7 million. We were, the comparables that they used were more in line with the comparables that we thought were more appropriate. Still might make the argument that they probably should have not used one or two of the wooded lots in their valuation to come up with the appraised value, but we think their value was very close to, their appraised value is about right. One of the problems we're having right now in the county, it's supply versus demand. There's not a lot of land out there for sale. Most of my recent acquisitions, there's been multiple purchasers, so we are competing with, are competing with other people. Try not to get into a situation where we're bidding against ourselves. I think our initial assessment of the property, when we looked at it internally, we thought it was going to be about $7 million, 7.2. The offers came in quite a bit higher than that, and this is why we ended up at our current purchase price. That's the appraisal.
So with the bidding that was going on, we're looking to spend, to pay $1 million above the appraised value, approximately $1 million?
Yes.
Ms. Robian.
I wanted to renew Councilmember Pickard's question about the super fund site on this property and apparently the neighboring property as well, and what the status is, and what are plans for cleanup? Can it be used safely in its current condition? And anything you can tell us about that?
With the, it's the neighboring property that has the issue, possible groundwater contamination. We've ordered a Phase 2 environmental, which will tell us more about the issue. We don't think that the site we are buying is going to have an issue. The site does have public water and sewer. As long as we're not using the groundwater, we shouldn't be at risk. We will know more by the end of this month, when the Phase 2 report is in and we review it.
Madam Chair.
So I'm just curious. I think by all estimations, it's probably a better site than the other one that was being, what is the price differential? I mean, this is an industrial site, so it's probably valued a little higher than the one that we were looking at off of Route 3.
It is the other site. I think this site is about $3 to $4 million more than what we were looking at previously.
That's what I recall as well. Okay. It definitely is a better, a better area for a bus depot.
The school's facility, what they use it for, really does fit the overall neighborhood. I don't think anyone would complain with the school having a transportation site at this particular facility.
Thank you. Ms. Littbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Want to pivot to the Gleeb property that's in the resolution. And I think this is probably a question for Wreck and Parks. Could you just go into a little bit, we have mentioned passive recreation. If you could go into a little bit more detail about specifically what that is and what it is not.
Good morning. Erica Matthews, Deputy Director for Recreation and Parks. Passive recreation at a much larger scale is anything that does involve organized sports. In this case, the idea would be the expansion of trails through the property and wildlife observation. We did do the Mayo Master Plan in 2018. This would be a key connector between Gleeb Park and Lockhaven Park. This is sort of sandwiched in between the two.
And by connector, you meaning through trails?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
So additional questions on the Shipley site? So the adjacent property is one that is designated a super fund site. If we were going to do a Phase 2 assessment, what is the, if we determine that there is greater impact that has encroached on our property, what's the plan then?
We would definitely talk about that internally. If, I don't believe that will be the case. If it is, we would probably walk away from the transaction.
So do we have that ability if, when the Phase 2 is completed? I mean, is the Phase 2 plan, is the Phase 2 assessment a stipulation?
It's, it's, we're still in our due diligence period. If we do find something not good with the Phase 2, we could walk away.
We could walk away because, I mean, this is an expensive piece of property, and if we find out that mitigation is going to be significant as well, this may not be a good choice for any of us. And again, with the price going up that high, this is, I mean, it's a little risky, this high of a price with the uncertainty of the environmental impacts, so.
Agreed.
There, so as part of it, so you said they're going to have continued things. So when you look at the Phase 2, how long does that take to do the Phase 2 assessment?
Normally, those reports take between 30 and 45 days.
Okay.
I have asked the consultant to complete the report as fast as possible.
Okay.
So I'm hoping to have that report by the end of this month.
And then we could make a determination of what, if any cleanup needs to be done, what the cost of that would be?
We could, yes. Once we get that report.
So we've already signed a contract for this property, correct?
Yes, we have.
But not the final, this is not the final deed? Because you said we could walk away from this, so is this just a?
We do. Our contracts provide a time period for the county to do their due diligence.
Okay.
For example, if we find out something about the property during that due diligence period, then we can opt out of moving forward with the purchase.
Okay, so this is not a binding contract to, I mean, I mean, it's a, it is a binding contract, but we have the background for it.
We do have the ability to get out of the contract in addition, even before we can officially close on the purchase, we would need council approval.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Robian.
This is really just a comment to Wreck and Parks and anyone who is involved. Congratulations on getting that, the property in Gleeb Bay. I know it's not in my district, but I've heard about it for a long time, and I know it'll be, hopefully it'll be exciting for the community to know that it will be protected from development.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. So we will now take this time to turn it over to the administration to discuss a piece of future legislation on updates to signage.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Joining me at the table will be Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney from the Office of Law, Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer from the Office of Planning and Zoning, as well as Jessica Bella, a consultant who has been working with the work group on the signage code updates. And I will turn it over to them once they get settled, so Lynn can talk a little bit about the need for this bill and the background and the work group.
Lynn Miller with Office of Planning and Zoning. So we're here today to provide you with an overview of a piece of legislation that will be coming to you soon, which is an update to the signage ordinance in Article 18, the zoning code. This is an effort that has been in the works for a while. We first looked at this back in '27 and '28, primarily as a result of a court case that had made it to the Supreme Court that had significant, significant impacts on local jurisdictions and the way that they can legally regulate signage. So that effort went on for probably close to a couple of years. It did not end up being brought forth primarily due to other priorities, changes in administration, and a variety of reasons. But it's been on, in our slate to get this done for a while, so we've undertaken it again. I think possibly the good thing about having to hold it is that there has been additional case law that has come out since that important Reed versus Gilbert case in 2015. So there's a little more guidance now for local jurisdictions. There are some additional model ordinances that have become available that really helped to give us some guidance on this effort. We did hire a consultant, Jessica Bella, sitting here to our right, who has done an enormous amount of research and work on this project. So we're very grateful to her and grateful to the council and the administration for approving money in last year's budget so that we could hire a consultant to help us with this. So the, our purpose, as I stated, one of our primary purposes was to make sure that our signage code is constitutionally up to snuff and is not challengeable. But in addition to that, it had not been updated in a long time, and it really needed to be modernized. There were, I think, insufficient terminology and definitions to cover the realm of signage that's out there in the world now. We wanted to make sure that our code was in line with best practices in the planning field and in the sign industry. We also heard from some of our stakeholders that they would like to see more flexibility in the way the county regulates signs to allow them to meet, you know, the needs of the commercial industry these days. And hopefully, the result of all this will help reduce the situations in which our constituents have to seek variances to the zoning code by providing this additional flexibility. So we feel like we have accomplished those objectives with the draft that we have sent to the county council. As part of this effort to, in order to incorporate some public outreach, we decided to go with a work group, which is usually a good format to use when we're working on a sort of targeted specific topic like this. Due to its technical nature, I think trying to do outreach through the website using the entire general public the entire general public would have been challenging. So we found the work group format to be very helpful. We formed a group with about 16 people, which included planning and zoning, public works, inspections and permits, and a representative from the county council, which was Ms. Kristin Edsall. Thank you. And we also had representatives from the commercial development industry, from the Growth Action Network, a couple of people who represent the signage industry, who actually own companies that manufacture signs, and some members from NAOP as well. So we got a lot of great input from them. I do feel like our, our final draft product here, I, I think that they're happy with it. I think it addresses many of the concerns and the needed updates that they wanted to see in this, in this effort. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bella and let her give you a little bit of overview of the current status of case law regarding to signage. She did a very large amount of legal research, and it was very interesting. And then we're going to sort of go into some of the key changes that we're proposing in this draft and some of the key discussions that we had with the work group. So.
Hi. Nice to be here with you this morning and excited to see this coming to the end after several months' effort. So I am not going to, I could sit up here for days and talk about all the different court cases and the legal discussions that are occurring around signage, but instead I'm going to give you the Too Long Didn't Read Cliff Notes version. So essentially, the Reed versus Gilbert case in 2015 really upended everyone's understanding of how to administer signage. It was a Supreme Court ruling focused on a case that occurred in the town of Gilbert, Arizona, where the town had basically different categories of temporary signage: political, ideological signage, event signage, directional signage. And it had different regulations for this is the size of the signage, how many of these signs you can have, and how long they can be put out. So it had categories for these different sign types. And the Supreme Court said, "That is a content-based regulation because you're providing more speech to certain individuals or viewpoints based on what their sign says. That is not constitutional." So essentially, they did, they did not do a soft correction to that. They did a hard correction, which it basically kind of made the new standard of if you have to read the sign and then you apply different regulations to the sign based on what you read, it's not a constitutional regulation. And they did not go into a great amount of detail in that decision explaining how to practically alter sign codes. So pretty much every single jurisdiction at every level in the United States suddenly had to go back in because they now had sign regulations that were, that did not meet the standards they would need to meet for free speech. So that's kind of the, the most detailed you get for, for the landscape. So some communities kind of went in and they just removed any content-based terminology, but they didn't get at the heart of what the Supreme Court was saying was, "It's not enough to change the terms you use to describe signage. If you're regulating by the purpose of that signage as well, or its function, you're also making a content-based regulation." So what you, what communities need to do is essentially say, "I can regulate by the size of the sign. I can regulate by the type of the sign, the material. I can regulate where it's allowed to be located in a right-of-way, out of a right-of-way, on private property, in a commercial zoning district, in a residential zoning district." But that's kind of the extent of it. You can't then parse further than that or what you're doing, as you're infringing on the, the speech that is constitutionally protected, both for individuals as well as commercial entities, and the wide range in between nonprofits and institutional uses as well. And so luckily, in the 10 years since that case first came out, a lot of other people have been rewriting their codes. Challenges have been brought against those codes. Smaller court case law has tried to, to parse, "What does it mean to be content neutral? Where's the fine line between regulating for the vast array of different kinds of signage that are, that exist in the world versus making sure that, that you're not regulating based on the, the message and the content of the signs?" And we used that model language, read through that case law, and started applying those lessons learned to Anarundel and being sure it worked for what you wanted to accomplish for your community. I know that there'd been recent legislation, legislation related to signs in terms of background areas, what should or should not be considered signage. And so, as Lynn mentioned, we kept the structure of your, your sign code. We kept a lot of the major decision points and updated to remove any content and essentially to kind of allow the amount of signage that we have already allowed to exist and then allow more flexibility for community members, commercial property owners, to decide what kind of signage meets their needs, while still having these guardrails in place to make sure you don't have too much signage, so you don't, that you kind of control for the adverse secondary impacts of unregulated signage. That's kind of the summary of a little bit of the legal information and a little bit of kind of our approach applying it.
So if there are not any questions yet, I will move on and give a fairly high-level overview of some of the key aspects that we changed in the code. And then I'm going to let Ms. Bella go into a little more detail about several of those items that did generate a lot of discussion among the work groups, so that you all know what some of the, the key issues were with them and whether we were able to resolve them. Or there are a few that I think our recommendation is not what all of the work group members had, had recommended. So we'll point those things out, too. So one of the key things we did is, you'll see a very long section of definitions in the new legislation. This was necessary because we're trying to now cover the whole range of different types of signage that's out there in the world now and make sure that all the users of the code, both the signage industry and the permit reviewers and inspections of permits, understand the difference in these types of signs. We also incorporated a purpose and intent statement, and this is something that Ms. Bella discovered frequently in her research, that the courts are strongly recommending that these types of ordinances include a clear statement of what your intent is in regulating signage to help, you know, protect the county in case of any challenges and to make it clear what, what you're trying to accomplish through these regulations. We did make changes to try to provide more sign area and more flexibility in terms of where signs can be located. And this was in response to what we heard from a lot of people on the work group and from what we've heard in, from people in the past who were submitting sign permits to inspections and permits. One of the key ways that we allowed for more sign area was to change the way that sign area gets calculated, and I'll let Ms. Bella talk about it in more detail. But there's various different methodologies that people use out there in the world now to calculate sign area. And the method that we had been using is a little bit outdated, and it was simple, which is the advantage. It was basically draw a rectangle around your sign area, and that's your sign area. But that does not really, it, it's not the most effective way to measure, to measure sign area, and it can constrain certain types of signs. So we've come up with a more, a more modern and widely-used way to do that now. We have also dealt with signage in the right-of-way. And one key thing we've done is we've actually moved the oversight of signs in the right-of-way over to Public Works. Right now, Public Works really has approval, but right now, an applicant to put signage in the county right-of-way has to apply through the Office of Planning and Zoning, which is not the most efficient way to do this because Public Works really has control over the county's public right-of-way. So that's why you'll see a section regarding Article 13 in the legislation, which is basically shifting that to Public Works. I do think they're going to come out, not as part of this legislation, but possibly in their design manual, but with some more guidance as to the types of signs that are going to be allowed in the county right-of-way. And, excuse me. Beyond that, we have a fairly long section in the proposed legislation dealing with temporary signs. This was a big topic that we talked about a lot. This one was, I think, is one of the most challenging aspects of regulating signage because we're trying to find that balance between allowing people to express their opinions and, and, you know, accommodate free speech versus having, you know, visual clutter and a proliferation of signage everywhere. So you'll see some expanded recommendations, which Ms. Bella's going to go over in more detail. We also added some new sections related to the type of signage allowed in different zoning districts. It basically follows the structure that the code uses now and that right now, we have sections in the code that deal with signage in residential districts, signage in commercial and industrial districts, signage for business complexes, et cetera. But as you all know, our, our zoning code has expanded a lot in recent years and allows a much larger variety of different types of development in different zoning districts. So now we also have allowances for residential uses in commercial and industrial districts. We have recently updated mixed-use zoning districts, et cetera. And so we felt that the sections of the current code didn't cover all the possible future scenarios of types of development that can occur in different zoning districts. So we've expanded on that a fair amount without drastically increasing the amount of signage that's allowed, but really just trying to cover the different development scenarios that we might see in the future. And then lastly, this is not part of the actual proposed legislation, but we are working on an illustrative guide to help the users of this signage ordinance because we recognize that it is very technical and it's a little bit complicated to work with. We shared with the council a part of that, which is this document that has lots of graphics indicating different types of signs and how we're proposing that sign area be measured. And this is ultimately going to be included in a larger user guide that we're going to make available to county staff, the public, the council, and everyone else who uses the signage code, which will hopefully help you decipher all the technical language that's in the code. So with that, unless there's any questions right now, I'm going to let Ms. Bella go into more detail about some of these specific discussion topics that we spent a lot of time on.
So the first thing you'll see when you now turn to subtitle three is several pages of definitions, which I know can be quite frustrating because you're like, "Well, we all know what signs are." But the, the answer is, it's actually very difficult to describe sign types without talking about the content of those signs. You know, historically, we, we use message-based language to describe different kinds of sign types. And there's also a lot of differences between different communities and what they call different sign types, as well as kind of commercial industry standards versus regulatory standards for defining signs. And so the definition section has been expanded to create Anarundel's definition of different kinds of signs, particularly when you're regulating those signs differently. And then there's visual representations of that so that people can, can see. Often, words cannot as, as easily communicate what a sign is versus a picture when you can easily look at that and say, "Oh, I, I know what that is. I know what that sign type is." So that's, that's a quite an expanded section. It is as long as it needs to be for the regulations, but we did try to trim it as much as possible. And then one of the, the other major changes you'll see is that when we look at the signs that are prohibited in the county, some that were previously prohibited, like sidewalk signs, are recommended to now be allowed, but regulated on, on where they can be located. Partly, that approach was that people are using these sign types anyway. There's kind of a, an expectation for a lot of retail users that they, particularly restaurants, that they want to use sidewalk signs. And so what we're always trying to go back to is, well, what is the, what is the government interest in regulating signs? We just don't want them cluttering the sidewalk. We want people to be able to walk around them. We don't want them to blow over. So let's regulate for those issues, not just prohibit the sign type. So that was kind of the approach to, to a lot of the signs of whether they were allowed or not allowed. We did try to limit the amount of signs that are exempted. You know, if you'll think back to that, when I talked about the Reed case in 2015, one of the reasons that community got in trouble was that it had too many different kinds of exemptions and too many rules based on categories. So we're just kind of doing some standard exemptions across the board. Subsequent case law has essentially said that governments can continue to have government speech that doesn't need to follow all these regulations. That speech can take the form not only of the kind of signage that you put on roadways to basically control for safe traffic, but also on government property, you know, the kind of signage that we need to communicate. Government purpose is, is an exempted item that is generally supported in the case law. We, you know, we're not interested in regulating interior signage. That's not having the, the impact on what we're trying to control for in our stated purpose statement and intent. And then there's a few kinds of outdoor land uses, like open-air stadiums, where technically that signage is outdoors, but it's not directed towards an outside audience. You know, as, as long as it's not directed towards people who are traveling on a road, then it, it really should be treated very much like interior signage. So that is also maintained as being exempt. And then we, we do, in our definition of signage, list certain objects that could be construed by the definition of what a sign is as they should be regulated as signage. But we're, we're not interested in regulating those objects because they don't have the secondary effects that we're trying to control for. Things like grave markers. We're not interested in regulating the amount of grave markers you can have, even though technically they meet the definition of a sign. You know, clearance bars, the little signs that said FDC so that the fire department knows where to hook up to get to the water. Like, those are not the kinds of signage that we are trying to control for, for aesthetic or traffic safety issues. So you do have to parse some of those out and make sure that you can withstand scrutiny for like, "Why are you exempting these?" And typically, it's about safety. So that's kind of where we're at for, for our signage. One of the major requests and recommendations that came out of the work group was around frontage. And the fact that the current definition of frontage in the county is a road from which you have access. As we know, access is pretty heavily controlled, particularly on larger roads where you don't want a driveway coming in frequently onto that road. So there are certain businesses that feel like they don't have the ability to place signage where it would most benefit them against that road that they don't have access to, but that, where most of the audience they're trying to reach is located. So we created the term essentially property frontage, which is, it's your, your property line against a roadway that you don't otherwise have access to. And under certain circumstances, you would now be allowed to place a sign in that location, which you previously would not be allowed to do. One item I do want to raise is, is we did create kind of a guideline there that the, the length of that property frontage has to be a minimum of 300 feet long. And that's because when you start placing signs really close together, particularly against higher-speed roads, they get in each other's way. Like, the people traveling at speed, glancing out of the side of their eye, can't see the signage in time. And so it, it will create that visual clutter that we're trying to control for, and it will also, it makes those signs ineffective in what they're trying to achieve. So essentially, we're just trying to say, "You have to, you can only do this if your property frontage is sufficiently large enough that you can place the sign and have it adequately, or have it be legible to the, to the community." That was kind of one of the big changes to the code as well. The sign area calculation methodology. This is probably one of the, the bigger beasts. sign area calculation methodology, this is probably one of the bigger beasts to wrap your heads around. So best practices generally is that you want to kind of shrink the sign area measurement as close as possible to the physical limits of the sign. So some communities say, I'm going to take a trapezoid, a triangle, a circle, a square, and I'm going to, you know, trace them around all the different aspects of the sign, and then I'll sum those all together, and that's the sign area. We kind of discussed in the work group that that was just too complicated a methodology, and it's too easy to not apply that uniformly across different sign types. But that, as we said, the single rectangle sign, it poses challenges because, say you have one of those signs where it has that really big first letter, and then the rest of the sign is pretty small. To fit that entire sign within a single rectangle, you're going to shrink the text of the entire sign, and now it's no longer legible. So it penalizes this, what could be aesthetically a pleasing sign, only because you don't fit within our method of calculating, even though you don't take up that much more space. So we have, what is, what we are recommending is a 12-line perimeter, which is, if you look at the guidance documentation, the visualization for how to trace it, is you essentially start at one point, and you start drawing straight lines, and you can have up to 12 of those connected. And if you take that shape that you've now drawn your line around, you can create simple rectangle forms within that shape, and then sum the area of all those rectangles together to get the sign area. This really is only going to apply to building signs that don't have, where you're not measuring the sign face background, but, or to signs located on decorative gates or walls, like in our subdivision communities. So the way I, the way, the best way to describe this, because everyone's eyes start glazing over when you get into this, is if you want to have a circular sign, and you put a square around that, the corners of the circle are, they're not usable space, and now your circle has to be small. If you do the 12-line perimeter, you're basically measuring as a cross now. And so you're cutting out that unused corner space. So that's the best way to think about why we're doing this. And it, what we're really trying to achieve there is equal sign. And we also want to encourage unique sign types. We don't want everyone to have a boring square sign because they want to maximize their sign area. Annapolis, in particular, I've loved driving around your community and seeing several sailboat signs everywhere. Well, that's essentially a triangle, and you don't want to discourage that sense of place from being created. So that was kind of one of the major changes. It's going to be a bit of a learning curve applying it. But we are hoping to do so with the user guide, like a lot of visuals to help people understand. So let's, and then I do want to note that we did try to maintain, to be consistent with your recent council action of essentially, if someone paints the background of their building a different color, but they're then applying their sign to it, we're not measuring the length of the painted area. We're just interested in what constitutes a sign. And then I could bore you for hours of technical detail about what makes a background integral or not, and we just tried to parse it in the code. And the other thing is, you'll notice in that is the sign height that's allowed. Typically, six feet was sort of where your existing code was at. Six feet is not visible if you're on a road and there's a car in front of you. You can't really see the sign past it. So it's really, that's really designed for, you know, pedestrian scale, or kind of like having kind of a calm residential character. We bumped it up to about eight feet so that that's not getting so high that you're affecting that kind of residential character that would be protected. But in certain situations, if the primary audience is a road, and you want people to be able to see over the car in front of them, they can kind of exist within that two-foot space between six and eight feet. So that's kind of one of the reasons that you'll see the height increase. And that's kind of to find that balance between character versus best practice for legibility. And then you'll get to signs in the county right away. This was one of your biggest content-based regulation, is that you allowed, you know, permanent directional signage in your county right away, but only for specific uses and only under very specific categories. And that's just not going to withstand constitutional scrutiny anymore. So we had to remove that from the section and essentially say, well, what is the purpose of this directional signage? It's to help people safely navigate in certain traffic situations where they might need additional signage to help them get to a use that's not visible. Allow the Department of Public Works to decide when is that necessary. And then they need to apply that equally to all the different kinds of land uses. You're not going to be able to parse it out for hotels, yes, but, you know, restaurant, no. So they need to have some kind of standards that are equal. But that has now been removed from the sign code. That was a big change. The same thing you'll see for directional signage. You allowed unlimited directional signage on your property. That is a content-based regulation because you're essentially saying, only a sign that achieves this purpose is allowed to be placed without, as necessary. We, I did a lot of legal research on this one because I wanted to give you, to recommend to you guys a code that I think could withstand scrutiny. And I think there is a compelling government interest in allowing directional signage as necessary because it's very difficult for us to say, every lot only needs this amount of directional signage. You know, every lot has a different built environment that is more or less complex, and their directional signage needs might be very different from each other. And so it's just not possible for us to regulate at this level and parse it out. And we don't want people to be turning into a lot, getting to their first decision point, left, right, straight, and they don't know where to go, and now they're queuing up traffic onto the roadway because they're having that indecision moment. So we still want to allow that directional signage as necessary, but just maintain guardrails for how large it can be and where, and the fact that it does need to be onsite is not an opportunity for additional advertising signage. It's really about helping people navigate your private lot. So that's kind of one of your big content-based regulations. There's a lot of verbiage in it to kind of defend that in a judicial setting. One of the other things that we looked at is service windows and drive-throughs. One of the results of COVID is actually that the drive-through industry had a huge boon. And you're seeing more drive-through traffic. You're seeing drive-through establishments installing second lanes. And you're also having a resurgence of kind of an old form of service window for people who are not in a vehicle, who want to walk up to a building and receive something. I always think of like the Rita's Ice Cream is kind of the traditional example that people think of, you know, you are accessing a service window. The signage needs of those uses is greater than uses that have that interior space where they're interacting with customers. And so we do carve out and allow additional signage for those particular uses. And then kind of one of the last ones I wanted to touch on is prohibited signs. We still maintain the on-off premise signage distinction. This was the big question that came following the Reed case of, can you still regulate commercial signage with more strict standards than non-commercial signage? And the Reagan case that came out in 2022, Reagan National case, said, yes, you can still do this. You can still prohibit off-premise signs. Off-premise signs is basically just the regulatory term for billboard signs. It's those big off-site advertising signs where what you're advertising on the sign is not at the location that the sign is at. So we wanted to maintain that off-premise sign regulation because we don't want to open the door for billboard, outdoor advertising signage. And that, we did have some concern from some of the work group members mentioning, well, what if the best placement for my signage is not on the lot that I'm located on? Is there any way to, you know, allow for signage to be placed in proximity to my lot? And there's just not an easy way to parse that without opening the door to billboard signage or outdoor advertising signage, because we can't say, only for you, a specific user, a specific use, so you allow this additional signage, you know, then you're doing content-based regulation. So that's kind of one of the big items that have changed over. I know it's a very long bill, so if there's any specific questions about specific parts of it, we'd be happy to answer those.
So I want to thank you because you made this, and signage is not the most exciting topic, and you made this very clear. Thank you. I really appreciate it. And I wanted to share with y'all, too, that I've gotten lots of feedback from industry groups and people that were on the work group about how helpful this work group was and how productive it was. And everyone, overall, everything I've heard has been extremely positive. This is so detailed. We appreciate y'all doing the hard work on this and not making us as a council have to dive into creating all of those. Sounds like it was very thorough. I have a question. You kept talking about directional signs. Can you give me an example? I'm not quite getting what that, what you mean by the directional signs into specific places.
Right. So we do define directional signage, since we regulate differently. And we define that as being, its primary purpose is to help people navigate to a specific use on a lot, or a specific establishment or activity on a lot. And I think the example you'll see on that one is, if you're driving by a lot, or you pull into a lot, and there's that little sign that then has address and an arrow pointing this way, or it says, even the standard of, you know, insert drive-through establishments logo and an arrow, it's directional. It's a sign that's, its content and its purpose is to get someone to move in the direction that they should be moving in.
And would, are these permanent signs, or are these, they would be permanent. So these aren't temporary signs that somebody's put, like a garage sale where they're pointing this. This would be one that's permanently, they're saying, this way to get to the, you know, wherever.
Right. And when we get into temporary signage, we don't differentiate between directional or non-directional. People can do either, but we're just interested in the size of that signage.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I get into the details of this proposed bill, and I just want to highlight that as my staff has been a part of the work group, that I think this is a model way for the administration to work on proposed legislation, especially stuff that is really complicated. The stakeholder engagement has been key. I think this work group has gone on in a very organized and professional way, in a very, somewhat of a tight timeline, and it's produced really great information for the council to digest in moving forward in modernizing our code. So I wanted to just both thank the consultant and the team, and remind the administration that this is a model way that we could work on other, other, other reform policy. We know how to do it. We know the administration knows how to do it because you've just presented it to us. We've done it this way with other complex topics. And I know the council is struggling with a bill that's before us that has not happened in this format. So just putting it out there, you probably knew it was coming. Any, this is going to come up, and we don't have everybody here, but how does this affect political signs? You knew it was coming. It's just, the county has, has had, has been, political signs are used on commercial properties, and all kinds of different organizations allow for political signs with different rules and regulations. How does this modernization of our code change the way we've been functioning? Because this is going to happen. It's a, it's fixing to be an election year. The questions are coming in the public hearing.
It absolutely comes up. It comes up for every jurisdiction because obviously, sign codes are adopted by elected officials who have a specific interest in, well, what about political signage? And, and the answer unfortunately is, you cannot regulate political signage different than other signs, because then you're doing a non-constitutional content-based regulation. So whatever you are comfortable with, for the amount, the size, the type, its location of political signage, you need to be comfortable with allowing that for anything else that goes on that signage. So advertise, onsite advertising, you know, support of sports organizations, that the message has to be content neutral. So the regulation can only regulate number, type, location. For temporary signs, yeah. The only distinction that you can have for the onsite, offsite, that's, that's about commercial. And that's, those are very specific, like, legal rules and tests for what constitutes, you know, a commercial speech on a commercial lot. But, but for political signage, you guys have to just decide, is, is this enough signage for us, for political purposes, and for any other content or message that would be on the similar-sized sign? What the code is proposing is essentially mostly unlimited, small temporary signage, so people can support a wide range of candidates. And then the main, kind of, I think the change would be in the number of large temporary signs. And that, and that's defined as a certain size, is you really only allow one on a lot at this point in time. So if someone could have one large sign supporting one candidate, and they can have a series of other small signs on their lot as well.
Madam Chair.
Yeah. Can I, can Ms. Robyn?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Ms. Robyn.
Thank you. So as I've traveled around the country, I've noticed that there appear to be districts that limit signage to basically something resembling a historic sign, where you wouldn't have a, you know, you wouldn't have light emanating from the sign. You might have a light shown on, shown, shining onto the sign. You know, it might require like some beveled edges or certain types of fonts, you know, for specific historic districts. And since Anna Rundle County, I think, has a number of historic districts, I'm curious if that's something that you looked into. How would that be, you know, I think, once a, you know, the district is in place, I could imagine it could be difficult to, you know, change the signage to a requirement like that. But I'm curious if that's something that you looked into, you know, creating, you know, special rules for signs in a designated historic district.
Our, I'll start. Our cultural resources section has been working on a signage program to allow historic markers, they call them, for properties around the county. Okay, sorry.
I'm talking about where, like you would have a, maybe a half-mile block in, you know, maybe the oldest part of, you know, an existing town. And even, for example, I'm just going to pick on McDonald's, even the McDonald's sign would not be its typical lit-up golden arches. It would be a flat wooden sign in a certain font with beveled edges, or something like that. That's just the one that comes to mind. And every sign on that street would be required to use that type of sign. So I'm curious if that's something. I can imagine, you know, we have lots of, especially, I'm, I think all over the county, really, we have places where that type of historic district might be something that, you know, a community would be interested in. And I'm curious if that's something that you've looked at at all.
Sure, understood. We haven't done that as part of this specific legislation because our goal here was to update and end up with a signage code that would work countywide. So, you know, the places where we've, you know, we have some area-specific sign regulations are, for example, the Odenton Town Center, that master plan has a specific section dealing with signage just in the OTC. So we could do that, we could adopt that type of, you know, area-specific sign requirements, but we would need to do that, I think, in separate legislation with probably, you know, a more targeted group of stakeholders who have stake just in that specific geographic area.
Ms. Pickard.
I was just going to continue the large temporary sign conversation. I'm looking at this, and it says one per lot or parcel. So that, does it distinguish between the size of the lot or parcel?
What it distinguishes between is whether it's located in a residential district or a non-residential district. a non-residential district. So in a non-residential district, that sign can be larger. And then it does allow the size to also increase if the frontage is larger than 500 square feet. So it's not the number of signs that is increased, it's the, the size of that sign.
So knowing that seven elected officials are going to be voting on this bill, are, is there an example across the country where, you know, if you've, if your road frontage on a commercial parcel is maybe like a business park where they've added more than, allowing more than one sign, no matter what the size per se, but I have a feeling, not necessarily generated by me, that this is going to be a hot topic amongst people. Because we're used to in this county during election season, putting signs out, especially in certain business parks and things that allow you to do so, you know, more than, definitely more than one. But these are large parcels. It's not like you're in an acre or a, you know, 20, 20 feet of road frontage. We're talking a lot. Personally, if it limited how much I had to spend on signs, it would be great because signs are total waste of hard-earned campaign dollars, but it's coming up. The questions are coming. I'm sure if all seven of us were here, I'm just curious if there's a way to get beyond the one, and if it's like every 10 feet, or if you've seen it done other places. I understand the content, but obviously the commercial business owner isn't going to, most likely, isn't going to allow random youth sports signs 180 days out of the year cluttering up their, their frontage. I mean.
Sure. We can, we can explore some other options for dealing with large temporary signs.
And maybe, maybe this, maybe the council will be fine with this. I just expect there's going to be some, hey, is there any other ideas out there? Maybe not. Am I the only one brave enough to just talk about it?
I don't know. I mean, I think you're right. I think people will.
It's coming. Conversation is coming. Yeah. We, we passed some, we had some sign legislation a few years ago where this was debated a good bit. It was a small modernization to the sign code. It was flutter flags or something like that. Remember that?
Yeah. I think that was related to the.
Which are very obnoxious.
What we now call feather signs, which are ubiquitous.
Whatever they're called. Okay. Well, any sort of examples across the other jurisdictions that have tackled this before us, I think would be really helpful. Or we can all buy less signs. Would be great.
Who knew that signage is so complicated? You're like, signs? Oh, yeah, you put up signs, and then you get into the minutia, and it's like, holy cow, how complicated what, think you should, should be simple. Oh, yes. This is incredibly helpful. Yes, very much so. So, all right. Any other questions? Anything you want to add, Ms. Miller?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate y'all coming out about this now before it's introduced, so we can make, gives us, gave us a lot of good background, and hopefully the other council members will watch this too, and if they have any questions or things, they can reach out to you beforehand, you know, as we, as we move into hearing the bill, so that everybody's prepared and ready. So, all right. Is there any business, any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time, our little small council this morning? So, all right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. County Council is adjourned until Monday, November 17th at 7:00 PM for our next legislative session in these chambers.
Mr. Hunt?